Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Vader City Council. It is Thursday, February 11th, 2021. My agenda is still wrong. After all of this time, I still haven't updated it to say 2021. Oh, I said the right date. The time is 6:03 PM. Roll call.
Donna Rogers here. Jason Daly.
Here.
Randy Hall.
Here.
Mike Parsons.
Here.
Samantha Lovelady.
Here.
Mayor Shai is here as well.
Oh, it's Mayor Shai. Are any speakers on?
Yes, yeah, that's working. The council members can hear us.
It doesn't sound like mine's on.
I don't think we have that internal speaker in here in the audio.
It's around the corner. I have it turned down so we don't get feedback. Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Rogers, will you do the honors?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, the mayor's report. The wastewater treatment plant upgrade. So the onsite contractor visits were held last week. The final bids are due next week on Friday, the 19th. At... City Hall will be open from 9 to 2 on Friday, the 19th because of the bid opening. So the way this is going to work is 1 o'clock is the deadline for the contractors to have their bids in. And so we'll pick up the mail from the post office at 1. Contractors will also probably be dropping things off no later than 1. Civil West will be here, and the bids will be opened one at a time. And Civil West will read off all of the contractors' names and the amount of the bid. A low bid will be... A presumed low bid will be announced at that time, and the contractors can be here during that time. The idea after that is that Civil West will take a few days to go through the numbers and actually make sure that the contractors did a good job, that they didn't underestimate things that are pretty obvious. And then at our following council meeting at the end of the month, on the 25th, a... Civil West will give a presentation to council about the low bid and what their recommendation is. And the council at that time can take action and vote for a notice of intent to award that contract. So it's pretty exciting. Wastewater Treatment Plant Funding Update. So we requested $1.8 million in funding on the Washington State Capitol Budget Line Item for this next year. If they were to approve that, we would have our entire wastewater plant funded, and we will not have to take out a loan. That is the hope. So we were working with both Mr. Orkut and Braun, our representative and senator, to get that done. And so it was put in. Stormwater update. So the repairs to B Street were complete. A Street, for those who have been checking it out, obviously, that is not done. When they got under there, they realized... They found that the break in the line is much longer. In fact, most of what is under the road was starting to crumble already. And so they need to replace the entire section. And so some of the sidewalk had to be cut up so that they could do a proper repair. The reason why they haven't finished it this week is the snow. County started to outfit all of their vehicles with snowplows, and they started sanding roads already, and so they got busy with that. So the idea is that they'll come back out next week to finish that project. They believe it'll stay very close to the estimate that council voted on. Administrative Assistant, the third employee. Employment notices were running in Lewis County News for two weeks. It was already in there this week. And posted to the city website and to the Association of Washington City's JobNet website as well. At this time, we've had two, two, applications. Lastly, not in the mayor's report, one of the council members thought it was wise to say that we found a discrepancy in payroll while doing taxes for this year, preparing the W-2 statements. It was found one of the employees was overpaid by $200 last year. That employee has reimbursed the city already, and it's been taken care of. Council reports. Any other council reports? Council members? No reports? Okay. Agenda approval.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the city council meeting agenda for 2/11/2021.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve the city council meeting agenda as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons.
I second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Mr. Hall, I don't think I heard your vote.
Yes, and aye.
Okay.
You hear me?
Yes, I do now. Okay. Any opposed?
Aye, yes.
Okay. Any opposed? Motion carries. Minutes approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve the city council meeting minutes for January 28, 2021.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve the city council meeting minutes from January 28th, 2021. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Lovelady. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 And...
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Voucher approval. I'd like to make a point, and I'm sure all of you that have looked at it realize that the vouchers are high this month because of the sewer water or the wastewater treatment plant upgrade payment. It's roughly half of our voucher total to Civil West. So it's part of the grant loan package.
I'm not sure I have the right totals, though. I can try. Is it 12,524? Okay.
That's what I have on my agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the vouchers for the end of January for $12,524.72. Amended, January 2021 total is $49,359.81. And the 1st of February, 2021, for $10521.78.
We have a motion by Mr. Daly to approve the vouchers as written. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons.
I second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. I do not believe we have any special reports tonight. Moving on to city business.
Yeah, sure.
Oh, it's the 1st of February. I'm sorry, Mr. Phrase. Take the stand, please. Lewis County Sheriff's Department.
Good evening. For the month of January, the Denver One for Activity Report for January, during that month, last month, there were 278 citizen contacts, a total of 14 calls per service, five of which were when there was actually dedicated deputy in the city limits of Vader. During that time, there were 25 traffic stops and one felony arrest, which was a warrant arrest. And that's it.
All right.
Questions?
Questions for Mr. Phrase. All right, hearing none. Thank you. City business. City Council, number one. Council to consider Resolution 042021, the Lewis County Interlocal Agreement. So if you've read through the agreement, this is for Lewis County to provide the grant-funded chip seal work this summer. If you remember, we've got over $30,000 from the Transportation Improvement Board through the Washington State, and Lewis County will be doing that chip seal work. So this is just the county's required paperwork for us to have an agreement with them for that... For that work.
I'm raising my hand, Mayor.
Yes.
That's kind of an off-subject, but kind of along the same lines. Has anybody talked to or informed the state about the condition of the highway as you start going down the hill and how it's kind of falling into itself on the left-hand side going down? The road's falling away.
You're right. This is a little off-topic, but you're referring to the hills on the way up into town here on the highway.
Yeah.
They did repair some of that.
Yeah, there is some patchwork on there, I noticed last night when I was driving through.
So they must have...
That's gonna help the whole... I mean, it's like it's sinking into itself, into the side of the road.
I'm sure when they fixed it, they assessed it at the time, so...
Yeah, I would hope that they would recommend a longer-term fix than just that patch. But their folks are out here doing it. I'm sure that they would have relayed that information. We could ask if you'd like. I'd like to move back to the Resolution 042021. Like I said, this is just the interlocal agreement of Lewis County to do the grant-funded
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 042021, the Lewis County Interlocal Agreement.
So a motion by Mr. Daly to approve Resolution 042021 for the Lewis County Interlocal Agreement. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Parsons. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Samantha, I don't believe I heard your vote.
Oh, sorry. I said aye.
Okay. I just want to make sure we're having some delays, so I just wanted to make sure everyone was included. I have a unanimous vote. Motion carries. City business. Item number two. Council to consider Ordinance 2021-01, updating the Vader Construction Code. So the reason for this, I will read the email. This is an every-three-year cycle. We are required to adopt the Washington State Construction Codes. These are based on the International Building Codes, which come out usually every three years. They are then adopted by the state after going through the Washington State Building Codes Council, which makes amendments prior to adopting. All cities then have to adopt the updated codes and can make additional amendments, but only amendments that do not loosen the standards. Usually, these are required for adoption in the summer, but due to COVID, the deadline was shifted to November. Then again, it was shifted to this February, 2021. We will be adopting the 2018 International Building Code versions. Currently, the 2015 versions are in effect. So that's where this came from. It's kind of a pro forma kind of thing where the state requires the cities to adopt the next version of the International Building Code.
The only thing that I see in there that was different is they changed the date of the addition.
Exactly. Yeah, and there are updates within the International Building Code itself, but...
Right. It's just something that we need to do.
You're right.
I'll make a motion that we approve the ordinance 2021-01, updating the Vader Construction Code.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve ordinance 2021-01, updating the Vader Construction Codes. Do we have a second?
Yes, I second.
Seconded by Mr. Hall. Hearing none. All those in favor of approving ordinance 2021-1, say aye.
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 Samantha, I don't think I heard you again. Just wanted to give the opportunity.
Hi, sorry. I don't know what's going on with my phone right now.
No problem. Any opposed? Motion carries. No, we understand we're at the mercy of the technology, so we just have to deal with it and make the best of it. Moving on to item number three. Council to consider ordinance 2021-02, the interim official control standards for manufactured homes. So the council asked for moratorium on manufactured homes. And so we looked into that. We had both the planner and the attorney look into it. And the reason why you have an ordinance in front of you like so... All right, if I can get this to show what I want it to show me. Okay. So this is what they said. They reviewed the state and federal laws, as well as Vader's current code regarding the regulation for manufactured homes. State law does not allow the city to regulate manufactured homes differently than regular stick-built homes. And so the problem is, if you were to have... You can't just have a moratorium on manufactured homes. We would have to have a moratorium on all-new home construction within the city, which, I'm assuming, we did not want.
Right.
And so the next best thing was what you have in front of you. It's an interim zoning ordinance where kind of like it's the same thing as a moratorium where it's for six months, and it gives us... It goes into effect immediately, and it gives the city a time to put together the real package of changes that we're interested in. So this goes on to say...
Pretty much says it's got to be new, it's got to be certified, and never lived in.
Right. There were certain things that we could ask for right away.
Concrete pad. But this one that says to provide a report from a soils engineer about the soils on the property.
Yeah, and I know we already are doing that. There's a manufactured home going in right now on G Street and on the north side, and there's a lot of water issues up there. And that was where we just had the new ditch put in and all that, the drainage off the hill. And part of their permit is a soils analysis to make sure that that ground is stable enough to have a home on it, so...
So I have another question about that. That area that's up in there is practically swamp land. It's always flooded up in that area, so how did they get a permit to...
They don't have a permit yet. That's the thing. They're applying for a permit, and they need to prove that it's a stable place to build.
Where? Where is this one?
This is north, way north, up by Ford Street on E.
It's on G.
G, it's the north side of G Street. So, you know, the last road as you head on up the hill, all the way in the back, right up against the hill. So this was the summary that led up to this ordinance. So it says that we are allowed to require that a manufactured home be a new manufactured home, which is not yet a part of the Vader Code. That it is set upon a permanent foundation, which was already required by our code. That it comply with all local design standards in the neighborhood where it will be located the extent the design guidelines apply by their... applicable to manufactured homes. Our code adopts the design guidelines, and these apply to any and all construction projects within the city at the time the building permit application is submitted. That the home is thermally equivalent to state energy code, and which was... We were unclear if that was actually in our current code. It was kind of a gray area. And that the manufactured home meets the requirements under state law, and that was already in our code as well. So from the attorney, the recommendation... Sorry, my screen is so small here. Difficult to see everything at once. Instead of doing a moratorium on manufactured homes, which may run the city afoul of state law, I recommend that we adopt interim zoning regulations with these changes. Instead of doing... I've recommended and then worked towards adopting permanent regulations. Interterm zoning regulations are regulations that are adopted using the same procedures as a moratorium. They take effect immediately, and they'll require a public hearing within 60 days and can be renewed at the end of the first six months if another hearing is held. While these are in place, we can run through the Growth Management Act process with the Planning Commission to adopt permanent regulations that implement the regulations that Vader is allowed to implement, so...
Well, this is a step in the right direction.
So it's a step... It does add some things that the council is going to want without getting us in trouble by picking on one kind of home, which is not allowed within the state law.
Right.
I'm raising my hand, Mayor.
A question from our Planning Committee Chairman, Mr. Gross. Go ahead.
Not so much a... Well, I guess might be a question. I know that when we had our meeting, and I'm going to bring a council member, Donna, in on the conversation, we had a particular challenge with what was going on with the current homes that were coming in that were manufactured. It seems to me that they all would meet that current standard that you're mentioning, and that we were looking to have something better, I guess, as far as the quality of the manufactured home that's able to come in.
Yeah, I understand that. And this was the best we could do within the two weeks that we had without having extra meetings and...
I mean, this is fair.
Well, and I'm not saying that it's not. Let me ask a different question. Is there anything in there that prevents from what the current challenges from happening again, or are we still kind of open to that happening?
Well, it sets some minimum standards, but I don't think it addresses quite everything the council had in mind. But that's why we still have work to do.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Gross.
Do we currently look at the state certification of the homes that are going in? Do we... Did we see that? I know some of them have it on... Put on the home. But are we... Are inspectors, or are they turning some state certification in as part of the process now?
Yeah, well, the home will need to be... I think one of the things I read was that the home meets the requirements under state law.
No, I understand that.
Okay.
What I'm asking is, do we currently verify that? Do we...
Is that part of the...
Are the homes state-certified? Are we checking on how they come in?
Is that part of the building permit process?
Isn't there a seal or something they get from the state to verify that it is?
Is that coming through the...
I thought I read somewhere here that it's actually stamped on the...
Before we get the certificate of occupancy, that's part of the order. It's supposed to be stamped on the mobile.
Yeah. I was just trying to think if it's part of the administrative process and where they bring it in to show it.
Yeah, they're supposed to be... Right, right. Mine, but I know mine was. But my question is, are inspectors or somebody looking at that make sure it exists?
So Jason's looking at it right now.
It says a manufactured home shall bear the insignia of approval by the state or U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
So the question is, how are we verifying that?
Yeah.
So I'm... I guess what I could do, I could follow up and find out from our...
That's my question.
Yeah, that would be, I guess that would be the time when the inspector goes out to do it.
That might be how those other ones are slipping through the cracks. I don't know.
Yeah. I can follow up with the inspectors on that and make sure that they're looking for that. It's in our current, right? It's not underlined on that one, right?
No.
No, it's not. It's already in our current code that it needs to have the stamp on it. So it's kind of, I guess it's up to the inspector to check, but I can follow up with him to make sure he is checking on that.
Okay. Just wanted to follow up on that. Just to make sure.
I have some questions on page eight and nine about the wording on C up at the top of the page about the city utility superintendent and county building inspector. So we don't have those people.
Let's see. So this would be page eight, nine, you said?
Page eight, yeah. Number C toward the top there. It says, "For purposes of fulfilling the intent purpose of this chapter, the city utility superintendent and the county building inspector shall be allowed access to all reasonable times and places." So that should not be directed.
Yeah, so it's obviously talking about county, but it's, we're not, we don't use the county inspectors for... Well, what is this section referring to? I don't have the thing memorized. Permitted use. Yeah. We could change that in the updated code when we do the second version of this. It's just an oversight. I mean, obviously, we have our own building department and our own inspectors, so in lieu of the county, it would be the city inspectors.
I was just saying that terminology should be changed for purposes. And I have another one. Do we actually have... It's the first paragraph, permits, applications, and requirements, where it says, "Applications for such a permit will be made on preapproval forms adopted by the city council." Do we... I've never seen a form that's counseled or approved since I've been here anyway. And the county number, back to the county building inspector again on that one.
Okay. These are kind of cool typos that not...
Well, yeah, but they can be...
They don't... Yeah, they can get adjusted. They don't really change the substance of the...
I'm not talking about changing the substance of it.
Okay.
It's just that the wording people are going to be expecting the county building inspector to come out and just...
So that we can get to the discussion part of it, I make a motion that we approve the ordinance 2021-02 for the interim official control standards for manufactured homes.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve ordinance 2021-02 for the interim official control for standards for manufactured homes. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Lovelady. More discussion?
Yeah, I want to know about what does this have to do with the city and the historic commercial district? What is going on there? I mean, I thought that was...
What section are you looking at?
Yeah.
Which section is that?
This is on page nine, Declaration of Public Emergency Effective Date and Duration. Somehow or another, we got in the historic commercial district. Well, what is that about?
So the emergency is that we want this to take into effect immediately versus the normal process, which would take a few months to go through commerce and things like that?
No, I understand all of that.
Okay.
It's just that we've got down here to the part that says, "Therefore, the interim official control must be imposed as an emergency major to protect the public health safety and so on, prevent a flood of applications to the city in the historic commercial district." I thought that part, we've settled the historical district. I'm just...
Well, it's...
I think that's even in there for this part of it.
One of the concerns is that... That's just one of the concerns among the other ones that are listed on here.
A concern about what, though? We're not going to be setting any mobiles in there.
Well, I don't believe...
Yeah, I'm not getting a connection with that.
I mean, I don't think... You don't have a problem with that, right?
No, I don't have a problem.
Oh, okay.
I just wonder why the historic...
I'm wondering if it was this section? Did we use this section for that memorandum or that moratorium for that section?
Right, well, you can...
Left in there.
Well, and you can see that this isn't... Hold on. Where is the...
Yeah, because it kind of sounded like the way it's... Yeah, 'cause it kinda sounded like the way it's worded here was the emergency major to protect the public health, safety, and welfare, and to prevent a flood of applications to the city in the historic commercial district. So I get the flood of applications, we wanna stop that right away.
Right.
But what does it have to do with the historic commercial district? That completely off...
Well, it's, 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 it's one of the ways to justify having an emergency.
Okay, so just for argument's sake, we've already established that, and not getting the historic district care, but...
I mean, if you don't like it, we could have it, have it removed.
Well, okay, let me ask it this way then. If we do this moratorium, then that would be putting this back on the historic commercial district. Does anybody have an application to build something there right now?
Not at this time.
Is this gonna stop them from that?
It would...
I mean, 'cause they would be building a stick built there, not...
Yeah, this isn't, this isn't a moratorium.
It sounds like this is, I know, but it's included in it. It's included in it.
I think the census just got left, should've been taken out.
I...
It's...
Nothing matters if it's there or if it's not there.
Well, what if somebody wants to come and build?
Well, once again, this only, this only applies to the changes that are lift, that are listed above, so it's not a complete, it's not a complete ban on, on things.
Yeah, but it's in, it is in the moratorium. I mean, that's what this whole thing is about. And if it's in the historic, that's why I'm not understanding why that got in there.
This isn't a moratorium, though.
Well, more or less it is. I mean...
No, it's just a little bit stricter rules for the, for the manufactured homes.
Right, but that's got nothing to do with our historic...
Exactly, exactly. That's why I'm thinking that this is part of the original, um...
Yeah, I know, I...
Moratorium for the downtown.
I understand, yeah, I understand what you're saying there, but I just don't understand why it got put in here. And I'm just wondering if that's gonna, if it would...
I think it got left in, it probably, she probably cut and pasted it.
That's what I'm, I don't know, yeah, but I'm, that I'm worried about.
Put it there and save us money instead of rewriting it.
I'm, I don't know, I'm not so sure about that. Because it's talking about, I didn't scrutinize this word by word with her, but it's, it's talking about a moratorium on the city's acceptance of non-exempt development applications. So, and so it's only, it's, it's not a moratorium on, so it's, I'm not doing very good at saying this, it's a moratorium on, on the applications, not on the actual property?
I, I don't know. That's why I'm just wondering if you shouldn't talk to her about it or ask her about it.
We could, we could put this off for another couple of weeks and...
I'm not talking about putting it off for another couple, well, I guess we have to vote on it tonight, but can we make like an exception or something just to, I don't know if you can do that or not, at least question, ask about it.
We could. You could, you could approve it with the admission of, of that line if you'd like, and then we could run it by her, and as long as she says that's okay, then we'll sign off on it.
Yeah, just so it doesn't stop somebody in that historic commercial district from building something.
I don't think it does, but we can do that. If you'd like to approve it with the admission of that line, if...
Yeah, at least, at least ask her.
Removal of that line, then we can do that.
Why should she put that in there?
Also, you might want to include replacing where it says county inspector to...
The county and the, the county and the city thing? The county and the city inspector, superintendent, city public utilities superintendent?
Yeah, because we would have to replace it with our building inspector and whatever.
With the city-related information. Okay. So...
So are you gonna add to that motion?
Withdraw your motion and then submit a new one, please.
Okay, so I'll withdraw that last motion. And then...
Where is it? Number eight.
Are we doing it?
Let me get the verbiage right. So replacing, so the intent then is to replace the sections that refer to the city utility superintendent and the county building inspector with the appropriate VADER references?
Yes. And then section eight on page nine.
Section eight on page nine, the sentence referring to the moratorium.
The sentence referring to the moratorium and the historic commercial district.
Mm-hmm. So it's section eight under VMC 2776050. Okay, someone like to make that motion, then?
Okay, I'll make the motion that we approve ordinance 2021-02 interim official control standards for manufactured homes with the adjustments we previously talked about.
With references?
Which include...
Can't read that.
Which, which include the replacement of county officials to city officials and the section eight of page nine, the moratorium, and the historical district.
We have a motion by Mr. Parsons to approve resolution, excuse me, ordinance 2021-02, the interim official control standards for manufactured homes with changes to, references to county inspector and city superintendent, also changing section eight referring to the moratorium of the historic district. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Seceded by Mr. Daly. Further discussion. All those in favor of approving ordinance 2021-02 with the listed changes, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. City business number four, council to discuss capping the amount of code enforcement daily fines. One of the council members requested this, I'll let them talk about it.
I would, because I brought this up, I don't know, last year sometime, and I think we should revisit it. Nothing was done about it, nobody said it would go on about anything, but I think there should be a cap on what you can, the code of course, the fines should be. I mean, an example is Judy's place over there where that got up to a half a million dollars. I mean, the place isn't even worth that. And then it went on, what, up to a million or something with the interest, I understand, I don't know, but I just think that you can't, we shouldn't be able to fine more than the property's worth.
So I believe we do, once it finally gets to that step, which is actually a fairly lengthy process before we, the city finally gets to the point where we are doing daily fines. It's a, I believe it's $500 a day per violation. Is that, that's correct, right? And so the household has two violations, that's a thousand dollars a day. And there is no cap on it. It can continue to climb if the property owner continues to not resolve whatever the issue is. It does not take long to get into the tens of thousands of dollars. And if council remembers on the last property that we had, that we had to take action on, those fines were high enough that when we were able to finally force the property owner to take action, which was to sell their property that was vacant, the city was able to not take all of those fines, but only the amount of our actual legal costs. So we cleaned, we got the property cleaned up, which was the intent, and we had our legal fees reimbursed from the sale of the property, and the city can not, choose not to, and get all of those fines back. So it just depends on the situation. You know, depending on, depending on this, on the situation, if you can imagine where the city goes through the trouble of trying to force the property owner to clean up the property, and it goes to the point where we're fining, fining them on a daily basis. Let's say they call our, they call the city's bluff all the way along, we pay all the money for our attorney, and then within the first five days after we start accumulating fines, they decide to take action and clean up the property. We need to be able to recoup our fee, our attorney's fees quite quickly. I mean, if they waited, if on day five, they decided to clean the property and we were only charging a couple hundred dollars a day, we would not recoup our attorney's fees. And so by having $500 a day per violation, we can quickly recoup our attorney's fees. So that, that's the idea about it. That's how...
And I think that we, we don't have to collect it, it's just like sentencing...
It's a incentive, yeah.
It's just like sentencing for, I don't know what murder is nowadays, but it's either life or 25 to life, but then the judge can give whatever they really decide. So we don't have to collect everything, but we should be able to have that there as leverage to get all of our fees back and all of, I think that we should, none of these should toss us any money, and if they go to that point, they should make us some money so that we can continue to enforce them. But we need to, I think the thing that needs to happen is we need to enforce the fines, 'cause there's a lot of people that, you know, oh, they've got a thousand dollars worth of fines, but now they, they're complying and they're sorry and they didn't realize that it was serious, and, and so in the past, we've waived those, we've even waived those fines, and that's where we keep losing money. I think that if, if the city accrues any fees, we need to get those paid back. And I don't know if that needs to be put into an ordinance so that it's not up to the mayor to decide, well, we're working with us now and let's not collect the $500,000, let's only collect $10,000 or whatever the number is, and we've got $15,000 worth of bills. No, we want at least 15 plus time for everybody's work, so...
So how would you put that into an ordinance now without, I, I just don't wanna see this million dollar thing again. That's ridiculous. I mean, if, if we need to recoup attorney fees and, and fees for whatever they have to put in work in, okay, I'm good with that, but where it gets so outlandish and over the top, it's ridiculous.
I think ultimately, you know, at some point, right, let's say, let's say it went long enough that your thousand dollars a day finally got to the point where it exceeded, the fines exceeded the value of the property.
Right.
Well, then it's kind of a, almost like a default at that point, right, where obviously we can't ever recoup the, more than what the property is worth if the city, if it actually got to the point where we foreclosed on it or something.
Well, that's what I'm saying about the cap.
But, but, I mean, there's, there's a default cap built into the system, I guess, and that is just the property value.
Yeah, but why would you wanna be paying the attorney to keep putting more and more fines on this place when it isn't worth?
Oh, we don't pay, I mean, we keep track of the amount of time. I mean, it's not like the attorney is going, oh, another day, and then they spend their personal time keeping track of it. It doesn't, it doesn't work like that.
I mean, that should just be a one-time thing, shouldn't it? Don't we even have a form here where we don't even have to discuss this with the attorney unless it comes down to, I don't know, like actually taking the property or putting a lien against it, but...
Up until, up until a certain point in the process, we do handle everything in City Hall. It's all administrative, we can take care of it all within City Hall, but at, but at some point, we do need, we do include, start including the attorney once we start making official judgments on their property and things like that. And so up to, up to that point, we handle it, and then once we get to the point where we need to make sure we're in all kinds of compliance, 'cause we're going to, you know, start...
Collecting.
Yes, I mean, start...
Being able to.
Yeah, start going to the next level, we get the attorney involved, and then of course, at that point, once the attorney's involved, also those, those fines start kicking in, which is why we've got the attorney involved, and then we will get that money back once they finally recoup.
So then how long do you let this drag out with the attorney? I mean, shouldn't there be some...
Well, I mean, there's a couple, I mean, there's a couple ways that this, that it could end, right?
Yeah.
I mean, if you have a code enforcement action like that. One, the property only finally takes care of whatever the issue is. Two, the, the city finally gets, the, the fines are high enough that it's actually worth the city's time to force foreclosure on the property, and, which is expensive process, takes a lot of, a lot of attorney time to do that. And so it would, the city could do that at any time. We could let the fines accumulate for years, or we could do it as soon as we thought that we had enough fines exceeded.
Well, if it gets to the point, if you, you've reached the property value, wouldn't that be the time to start foreclosing on it or whatever? I mean, why drag it on beyond that?
I don't think we would. I mean, we haven't, we haven't done that. I mean...
That hasn't occurred, has it?
Well, yeah, when you think, we've only been doing this for a few years now, right, with the building, with the official building department and everything. We've really only ever sought one home so up to this point, we've gone, we've gone, gone the distance on and forced, forced the sale of the property. So it's only ever happened once so far with our current system.
I think we started with seven homes and most of them just combined.
Right, yeah, it was just the idea that, wow, the city is able to do this now, and they took care of the problem.
So how many are in trouble now around there?
I think there's only the one...
The one that, that, you know, working with the lawyer, we had, just issued a stock forecourt this week.
Right, there was a stock forecourt on a...
We haven't gotten a response from that.
Right, on the windows thing, yeah. So, not many.
I did mention that one property on D Street over the hill there on the corner of, what?
We have more than one notice about it.
There's, there's like a motorhome being lived in and it's just a mess.
Oh, yeah, 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 there's been, there's quite a few notices been, been sent out for correction, but we haven't involved the attorneys, you know.
They cleaned it up a little bit.
So, yeah, so, and so a lot of times it just, with most folks, if you send them a letter and say, hey, someone's been talking to City Hall about your property, they, they're, they're so, I know, they're so, they're so, they feel so bad, and they feel, I guess, maybe shame, that they just take care of the problem. They say, I'm so sorry, it's taken care of. And so a lot of times, it's just a letter that needs to get sent out, and they take care of it.
Well, that's what I was asking, so, so how many letters have you sent out lately for, 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 has gone out?
How many reams of paper have you bought, Diane?
We, it's just the beginning of the year, I think we've only sent out one letter this year so far. We have placed on vehicles that are parked inappropriately, we've, you know, placed placards and had success with that, and then, you know, we deal with it as it comes to us. We do have to have evidence that this is actually happening, and somebody needs to come in and file a complaint, you can't just do it 'cause somebody said something, said something. We have to, you know, send out a ballot there.
Well, I, I've gotten a, you're my council member, so you do something about this, so...
So tell them.
And then you tell them to file a complaint, and then...
Well, you can submit a complaint too. I mean, you, I mean, you go take a look at the thing and come in and submit a complaint instead, right?
Yeah, well, if that's what we need to do, I can do that. I don't know, and I haven't been down that alley in a while, but they were dumping garbage behind D Street, is it where...
It's pretty messy back there. I gotta say, I drove down...
That old mobile was sitting there in the garbage?
Yeah, I, I took my ballot to the ballot drop box the other day and I drove down that alley, and it's, yeah, it's pretty ugly back there.
There's mattresses, trash bags, and that's from people that living... There's mattresses, trash bags, and that's from people that live in. The person that told me I was their council member.
On an alley? One of the, the B Street?
Yeah. It's where the old mobile is. Who was that's name?
Uh, Todd.
Todd, Todd Miller.
Oh, yes. They are, they, um, they are working on that property. I believe it's sold. And so that's actually where I've been with the stock.
Oh, okay. But somebody has been dumping garbage on their property. There's old mattresses out there, a bunch of trash bags and all kinds of stuff.
It's pretty ugly. I gotta say, I don't go that way.
I think it's the point where it's not, it's a health court violation. It can help us with that.
And that's where we've been, like, last two, two times ago, someone was complaining about a rat infestation and that's where it's at.
It's, that's where that big, it started all in that area over there. So.
So, uh, the city business item is the capping the amount of the code enforcement fines, the daily fines. And so hopefully, hopefully I've explained to council, just refresh your memory on, on why, why that is as high as it is. It's so that we can.
Okay, I'm, I'm satisfied.
So that we can recoup our, our attorney's fees.
Have a better explanation about what you're doing.
Yeah, so we can recoup our attorney's fees in a rather short amount of time. If, if the property owners decided to count, counter bluff up to the point where we finally get the attorney involved and then like three days later, they decide, oh, oh, I'll take care of the problem. Well, we've already expended the money on our attorney. So it'd be nice to have those daily fines be high enough that we could get our money back. Any other discussion on this?
Yeah, it doesn't seem. Doesn't seem reasonable with the cap that, cap the current, that fines. And, uh, you know, having some flexibility by the mayor seems reasonable to me. I, I'm not sure we want to take that away.
Yeah, it's, it'd probably be hard to think of all of the different, anyway, circumstances as to why, you know, someone, the mayor might want to waive those, those fines. All right, but.
Okay.
I would, I would think if, if we got to the point where we spent tens of thousands of dollars on the attorney and then the mayor decided to wipe the slate clean, I think city council may have, may have words for the mayor.
I think as a mayor, because city council is in charge of the money, that if you want to get rid of those kind of fines, that you should bring it before the council first.
Yeah, and it, it very well may, council very well may have the last word in that. I'm not really sure how the law applies.
I believe we're supposed to.
But you probably, you very well may when it, when the value would be that high. Any other discussion? All right, hearing none. Public comment. Any members of the public like to comment?
Hello.
All right, please come to the front and state your name, where you live and.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members and staff. My name is Mateo Plasia. I've lived in Vader for about five years on B Street.
Which address?
Six oh three. I came here this evening to raise a complaint over a lack of code enforcement and the city's failure to.
I can't hear her.
Okay. Speak up a little bit for her, please.
I came here this evening to raise a complaint over the lack of code enforcement and the city's failure to take action on the reports of code violations. Over the term of my residency, numerous complaints over the, and reports of various members of the community have been filed against my neighbor for illegal parking of the trailer and its usage for his primary domicile for its owner. Due to a recent marriage, an additional person is using the continued presence greatly because causes added financial and emotional distress to the community. Leaking open sewage from the trailer traps pests and rodents to the area. And their plays me harms the environment and will affect of this, of this city community. It is unacceptable that the city has just demonstrated a lack of awareness and situation. And fail to enforce the flagrant violations of those city ordinances despite the numerous reports. And it's further unacceptable to the community must continue to bear the burden of her illegal activities. Thank you for your time. I hope action will finally take against these code violations and remove the necessary illegal dwelling that, that causes undue strain to the community. Okay.
Thanks. You said you're at six oh three B and you said it was your neighbor?
Yes.
More public comment?
Thank you, Mateo.
Public comment, anyone else? All right, hearing none. Elected official comments. Elected officials?
So, so there are RVs all over this town that people are living in, have been. And so this one, if it's leaking from the home tanks, that's, that's not good.
That's definitely a public health.
That is a public health issue. Is anything going to be done about that? About doing the people living in RVs all, I mean, they're everywhere.
We have.
We've sent notices.
Yeah. I mean, we've sent notices.
Okay, and?
What would council like to do? Would we like to start?
Well.
What would be the, I mean, we, we inform them of the, of the law. Um, you know, they, that's where they live. I mean, obviously. It's a big step. The next step is a big step, right? Where, where.
The thing is, there's two RV parks out at the freeway.
But definitely the one that's mentioned by Mateo, that since it's a leaking and it's, it's a public health issue, so that, that's gotta be taken care of. That's the first I've, I've known about it. It sounds like it's in the area where we're talking about with traffic and like.
Yeah, I know who you're talking about. But is it, we have ordinances against it. So are we just going to close our eyes to these?
Part of the problem is one, how do you? How do you prove that they're living there, right? I mean, there's a house, right? And there's an RV and you're allowed to have an RV. I mean, you're allowed to have a trailer parked on your property. You know, but how do you, how do you prove someone is living there, right? That, that's, that's the real problem. That's the, the burden of proof is on us to say that you are living there.
Yeah.
And.
So I see you're defensive about it.
Well.
Well, the last time.
The issue is.
The reason he's defensive is the last time we brought one of these up, everybody got really mad and they hired an attorney and said, how dare you kick a war veteran out of his home? And so we paused everything and we, we went into the whole process of trying to do additional dwelling units.
Yeah.
And that didn't go anywhere. Everybody decided that we didn't want RVs as additional dwelling units on homes. And so I think the major issue is the last one that we did, the person hired that attorney and the attorney came in and everybody got scared or we don't want to spend any attorney fees. And so we let it go. And so instead of, um, instead of doing all the fines, because we were focused on one property at that time, and I think we do at this point, we need to start going for everybody living in RVs. But the problem is there's people that live in RVs that are clean and there's people that live in RVs that are dirty and we can't.
You're right.
If we're going to go, it's gonna have to all go to the RV.
If we have the ordinance, we have the ordinance.
And you're right. It, it's against the rule, it's against, it's against the law to live in an RV in, in town. It's not, you can't have it as a secondary, a secondary.
You can drive by and it's obvious. You drive by at nighttime, you know, the lights are on, the bridge are parked in front of it and there's people going at the house.
I know. And once again, the burden of proof is on us. And I mean.
How do you enforce it? That's the question.
I mean, you go there and you tell them, you know, you send them a letter, say, hey, if someone says you live there, you can't live there. You know, and, you know, the next step is to start.
Okay, that's not.
I mean, the next step is to start fining, fining the property owner where the RV is. You know, you go all the, the mile, get the attorney involved, start fining them five hundred dollars a day for the violation. You know, if you can prove, legally prove that they're really living there, right? Because eventually if they ever challenged it, we'd have to defend ourselves, right? And, and it's a tough thing to do. And, and you know, they probably, you know, sometimes like, like Mike was saying, you know, they have, you know, grandpa lives, you know, lives in the trailer behind his kid's house. They take care of it, you know, it's well, it's hooked up.
I know exactly who that person is that you're talking about.
Yeah, and, and it's, it's, it's a fine arrangement and, and.
And I see no problem with that.
Right. And once again, I'm not saying that I'm.
That's the problem.
And this is, and this is why we went round and round for months trying to create different, um, uh, some type of ordinance to allow it with proper permitting and hookups and, and checks and things like this. And it was just like this.
And I wouldn't mind that either.
It was just this can of worms. I mean, we started looking into it. We had, we got, we got advice and, and all this and how it would go. And it was huge. I mean, it was just like this, this administrative process on how to do this. It was just, it, it was turned, it turned into something bigger than we wanted to manage is what it was. Because you're, suddenly now you're managing a whole other.
Some of them are really a problem and more and more people. I drove down a street a couple, about a month ago, no fifth wheel sitting in that driveway. And then there's a fifth wheel in the driveway and a pickup truck in front of it. You know, somebody else is living in another one.
Well, I can.
And it isn't dirty, but, like, this is just a, it's a problem and we have the ordinances and so.
Let me see what, yeah, let me see, council's interested in it. Let me see what I can dig up again. Maybe we can take a second stab at it. Maybe not, nothing quite so involved this next time. But, but like in, like in this one case, in another, in a case like which was, which we just heard about, um, where there's a public health issue involved, um, you know, that, I mean, if there's a public hea- health issue involved, the city doesn't even need to get involved with that point. At that point, we can, we can raise that to the county health department and, and they'll take care of it.
Can you get them to come here? Because I have years ago called them and I know some other people in town recently have called the health department and they say, not us, that's the city. They're, you're the city.
Oh, well, the health department has been involved recently.
Excuse me, and they recently filed a civil infraction against one house.
Okay.
They did come and inspect and that's what they did.
So they will do it?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Have a recent, recent example.
At one time, it's like, and this is many years ago, but they wouldn't touch it.
Yeah, and I, I, I sympathize. I mean, there are situations where, you know, you, you want to have a, a small, a small residential unit in your backyard for a family member. Um, you know, I know that was something that we discussed as well. We were trying to say it can only be family, but what's family? You know, how, and then how do you, how do you, do they come in and say, prove that this is family, you know? Anyway, it was, it was just a logistical nightmare.
I know, it doesn't be.
They have to have health, if they have health concerns or if they're over a certain age, we talked about it.
I know we did. It was, it was.
Well, maybe we just over thunk it.
We're good at that. Okay. Well, I'll see.
You know, and they have the thing now all over the country. They're doing the little tiny house thing.
Okay. Both councils are interested in it. I'll see what I can dig up from what we've got in our, in our archives from last time and see if we can put together something.
Yeah, but that's, that's.
I want to raise my hand.
Yeah, Scott, go ahead.
Uh, so what about doing something along the lines of extending on the ordinance for the, the allowability or disallowing them to be parked to where when they are parked, that their, the, their black and gray water tanks have, they have to be remained open, which means that they're empty. Which means that somebody can't be in there and using it as a facility. Right?
Are you, are you volunteering to go check their gray and black tanks for us?
He won't, no, you wouldn't need to, but if a complaint comes up, it's a very easy way to check and to verify if they're following the ordinance or not. Oh, they're closed. Plus an indication that somebody could be living in there.
Yeah, Diane will go do that.
I just say, it just gives you an extra, it gives you an extra layer of, of something to be able to go to them and say, hey, you can't do this, which it makes it easier for somebody to, to be living in there if they can use the toilet and the shower. Granted, they're not hooked up to sewer, so they're getting it out of there in some way, shape or form at some point, right?
You're the wheelbarrow to the neighbors.
Right. Or, you know, letting it slow drip. I, I remember reporting that, um, I, I want to say that was on, on C Street. There was a place, this was a couple of years ago. It was the same thing. It was dripping out, out of it. So it's, it, lights are on at night. Come on, people, it's being lived in. It's not rocket science.
Yeah. Once again, lights don't, aren't proof that someone is living there. It's just a security. Okay. Well, I'll see what I can, we'll see what we can do. We'll add it to the agenda for next time. And see, we'll have, maybe we'll have some answers for you.
And are, are we calling the health department on that property for?
We're gonna, yeah, we'll follow, we'll follow up on that one.
Give you some peace of mind there.
Okay, uh, we were on elected official comment. Any other elected official comment?
I have been hearing a lot of people talking about just cleaning up the town again. And I think that the notice of violation should go out even more and we should follow through with them and start.
We still do the friendly letter, right? The friendly letter, you have two weeks. Please resolve this in two weeks. Blah, 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 blah.
Yeah, but if we send out the friendly letter, we have to be ready to.
Right.
Follow through with it. Otherwise.
With the not so friendly.
We're gonna have a bunch of little kids that don't pay attention to your parents.
Yeah.
So I'd like to see some of that going. And then we also, on that same note, we used to have like a list of volunteers that if somebody had an issue or got a letter, they could call the city.
We do. And I did call them for one of the properties that had a notice of violation and their families had, were in the hospital and they couldn't meet the deadline. But the group is currently not able to spring into action like it did before.
Okay.
And you know, people really haven't been going over to other people's houses very much lately.
Yeah.
Well, is there the possibility of having, um, like the city just breaking a couple of those big dumpsters in the spring and just letting people bring their stuff and put it in there?
And we can do that. We've, we've helped out before during the city cleanup, the, the volunteer city cleanup that was organized. The city pitched in.
But it wasn't ever household trash.
Right, it was not household trash. It was other things. But, uh, yeah, we did. And we used part of the code enforcement budget to help fund that.
Well, maybe we could do that again if they don't have that.
And do a household trash cleanup.
I think, I think Judy talked about that one time, that they did.
It's like a two hundred dollars or, you know, two hundred dollars for a dumpster.
Filled.
Yeah.
It like filled up in an hour or something like that.
Yeah.
And then they just kept bringing stuff and piling it around it. And then she's, I, I remember hearing that story. What's that?
She had two of them.
Yeah, one was yard debris and the other one was.
Just junk, whatever.
Oh.
Furniture, everything, I guess she said was, was dumped into one of them. So I don't, I don't see why the city can't do that. You know, we should also.
We can.
Yeah, I think that's, that's well on the budget to, to just coordinate.
And we usually did that in April. Last time in April, it came up, you know, it's kind of like a spring clean before May Day, clean the town up kind of thing.
But, yeah, we do rely on the volunteers to help it organize it, but we can't finance it.
And we should put out there again, you know, our volunteer list is pretty, pretty low and, uh, and slow. So if we can increase our, our volunteerism, that'd be great.
Well, I think it would be a good idea at least to put it out there, even if the volunteers don't come. Maybe the people can get neighbors or somebody that'll haul their stuff. You know, like a pickup or something like that. I don't.
Most of them are already full. We just got a dry truck to the dump.
Yeah, they're ready to go.
All right. Any other elected official comments? No? All right. Hearing none. This meeting is adjourned.
You want me to be, but I'd add something.
Go ahead, Randy.
The new employee.
Yes.
Uh, on code enforcement, maybe we can relook at those duties and with the new employee, uh, take some, pressure up some people in there and have one person be able to follow up on the codes.
Absolutely, yeah. Things, things will be getting a lot, there'll be, there'll be more time for, for that kind of thing.
Maybe, maybe that person could go around and make sure everybody buys their dog license tags too.
Okay.
Maybe, maybe not necessarily that person that you're hiring, but somebody in the office who has more expertise and knowledge.
Yeah, absolutely.
I might have the time to read up with the new.
I, I have the time to free up with the new person.
Yeah, yeah, we're hoping that, um,
There's a lot of dogs in town.
A lot of those tasks will be, um, be able to hand it off to the new person, um, freeing up, um, a variety of time for those other, other things that may.
Start cleaning up some of the metal, the cars and the rat, the garbage in the cars and all that nonsense. And help clean up the city.
Sure. All right, hearing no other elected official.
It's another reason to hire, it's, it's another reason to hire that special person.
Yeah, I agree.
A third person.
I agree. All right, hearing no other elected official comments. This meeting is adjourned at seven thirteen PM. Goodnight, everybody.